Hi, everyone, and welcome to the fourth WSGA Rules Review Session of the season. And just a few things before we get started. Among other things, today, for the first time, we're actually using video. So for those who would look at the YouTube video link later, instead of seeing a slide with the rule number that's being discussed at the time, unfortunately, you'll see a video of me. So by all means, those of you who look at this, who watch that recording later, please, as always, give us any feedback that if there's an outcry to see the rule number rather in my face, that's perfectly understandable and no feelings would be hurt. So please let us know. And also, as you can tell, now, things are a little snug this morning here. So just a reminder that when Bill and David send out the registration email for the next session, the next session won't be for two weeks. If you are planning to attend in person, please let them know so that, for example, we won't wind up with 30 people trying to squeeze in this room all at once. So please let -- or be short on donuts, more importantly. So please let Phil and David know that. And also, this morning, before we get started, I'd like to introduce a new person we have with us here, and that's Ron Olson, who is -- Ron, you're originally from Wisconsin. You've been in Arizona for a while, and now you're back here permanently?
Yeah, we spent four years in Surprise, Arizona, which is about four miles from St. Louis.
Okay.
And so my wife and I decided to move back, her dad is 91 years old. And so we did that, and we've been involved with golf, Arizona Golf Association.
Yeah, because I had gotten to know Ron through several PGA/USGA Rules Workshops, and he's done awful lot of fishing with the Arizona Golf Association. And Ron, we're delighted you could join us, so welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so today, we will pick up where we left off last time, which will be with 16. And the goal today is to get at least cover 16 rules, 16 through 19. And then, depending on time, you might skip over 20, given that that's such a big rule, and do 21 and/or 22 with that. So with that, Rule 16, the tee ground. The two constants on each hole are the tee ground, the starting point, and the hole, where people finish out. Notice that those areas, the tee ground, the putting green, more generally, have their own specific rules. And with 16, let's start by remembering what the putting green is in definition. It's all ground of the hole being played has been specially prepared for putting. And since, given the special grooming that that area receives, as well as the fact that all players must, again, converge there, that part of the course has its own rule. So let's talk about that. 16-1A, touching the line of putt. While this rule has seven exceptions, sometimes it's easy to lose track of the main theme of the rule, which is that very first line, line of putt must not be touched. And this is different than Rule 13-2, which we covered last week. Because remember, under Rule 13-2, players prohibited from improving, among other things, his line of play. So, for example, under 13-2, it's okay to touch your line of play as long as you don't actually improve it. But under this rule, a player is prohibited from simply touching his line of putt even if he does not improve it. So that's an important distinction. And let's not lose track of the whole premise of this rule, now, is line of putt must not be touched. But there are a number of exceptions, so let's go through those. The player may remove loose impediments as long as he doesn't press anything down. And the reason for that is that pressing something down most likely would be an improvement. The player may place the club -- and with that, with removing loose impediments, note that there's no restriction as to how he may do that. So, for example, he may use a hand, a club, towel, cap, et cetera, as long as he doesn't press anything down. The player may place the club in front of the ball when addressing it, as long as he doesn't press anything down. We see some players do that, some think it might help with alignment. A player may touch the line of putt when measuring. For example, to determine the order of play, it's okay to touch the line of putt. In lifting or replacing the ball, it's okay to touch the line of putt. In pressing down a ball marker, if your putter also touches the line of putt, there's no penalty. In repairing old hole plugs or ball marks on the putting green. So these may be repaired on your line of putt. And in removing movable obstructions, such as a -- this comes up very, very rarely, but such as a cigarette butt, you may touch the line of putt. And just as with loose impediments, there's no restriction as to the method you may use to remove the obstruction. So anything else, for any other reason, you may not touch your line of putt. So back 20-plus years ago, when spike marks were a bigger issue than they are now, people would say, "Oh, I hate that spike mark rule." And people had the misconception that there's a rule that said you may not repair spike marks on your line of putt. And while that is the effect of this rule, it's not explicitly stated. You know, you may not repair spike marks, heel marks, deer tracks on your line of putt. And not just repair, but just touch your line of putt for that purpose. So -- and with this, just keep in mind that this rule concerns itself with touching, not just improving the line of putt.
No problem, John, if you just step on your line of putt?
All right, good question. Stepping on line of putt, is that okay? And the answer, and here, the decision tries to have it, or does have it, both ways. If you look at 16-1A/12, because sometimes when you're surveying your line of putt, or you're doing something and being a nice guy, you're trying not to stand on someone else's line of putt, what if you accidentally stand on your line? And as this decision says, that there is no penalty if he did so accidentally and, and the act did not improve the line. But if he did so, if he intentionally stood on, walked on his line of putt, he would be in breach of this rule. So, for example, you can't walk along the line of putt to try to feel with your feet the slope of the green and so forth. So, good question. All right, 16-1B. This is the rule that allows the player to lift his ball from the putting green for any reason. And when he lifts it, he's also allowed to clean it. But as we'll see under Rule 20, next session, he is required to mark the position of the ball before he lifts it because he is required, this rule requires him to replace the ball. And one point that's interesting with this is in the second sentence where it ends with, "and the ball must be replaced." That's important, because let's say we have a situation where a player moves his, is asked to move his ball marker or putter head length to the side. He does so, then when it's his turn to putt, he forgets to return the ball marker. So he replaces the ball in front of the ball marker and plays. So he's played from a wrong place. Next session, we'll see under Rule 20-7C, that in stroke play, he's going to be penalized two strokes under the applicable rule. So in that example, what would be the applicable rule? And the answer is this rule, Rule 16-1B, that this rule requires the player to replace the ball, and by not replacing it in the correct spot in playing, he is in breach of this rule. So that's part of the reason why it gets out of its way to require the player to replace the ball. When another ball is in motion, a ball that might influence the movement of the ball in motion must not be lifted. And it's interesting to note and to compare this with Rule 1-2, which we covered several weeks ago, for several reasons. One, remember that Rule 1-2 is an intent-based rule, and that the first part of that states a player must not take an action with the intent to influence the movement of the ball in play. And notice also how it goes on to say, exception one, an action expressly permitted or expressly prohibited by another rule is subject to that other rule and not to Rule 1-2. So therefore, if a player lifts his ball, let's say Bill and I are playing together, my ball's line on the green, Bill putts, and while Bill's ball is in motion, and there is a reasonable possibility that his ball might strike mine, I lift my ball. But let's say I was, the only reason I lifted my ball was because I wanted to clean it, because there was a clump of mud on my ball, that I, so I was not trying to influence the movement of Bill's ball. In that case, what is the ruling? Well, first, from exception one to Rule 1-2, we're going to say that first, Rule 1-2 does not apply, that Rule 16-1B specifically applies to this situation. And notice with that final sentence in Rule 16-1B, that it is not intent-based, it does not factor into players' intention when making this determination. So in that situation with Bill, Bill's ball's in motion, reasonable possibility that it will strike my ball, and I lift my ball for the sole purpose of cleaning it. Would I be penalized in that case?
It might influence.
Yeah, and the answer is that I would be penalized. And that's very different than some Rule 1-2 situations. So just be aware of that, and we'll see a similar theme in other areas. Get into a little bit with Rule 17, and also Rules 23 and 24-1. And if we look at Decision 16-1B/4, it gives us a good example that provides some guidance. A's ball is on the putting green 20 yards from the hole. Ball of B is on the putting green 5 yards to the right of the hole. A putts while his ball is in motion, still 15 yards away. B marks and lifts his ball in order to clean it. A plays a poor putt, and the ball comes to rest a yard short of B's ball marker. What's the ruling? Well, as we talked about, this is not an intent-based rule, so the reason that B lifted his ball for cleaning does not factor into the decision. Really, what we are going to look at is solely whether B's lifting of his ball might influence A's ball. And the second sentence of the first paragraph of the answer is key. The determination as to whether there's a reasonable possibility that B's ball might have influenced the movement of A's is made by reference to the situation at the time B lifted his ball. So in other words, it's as if you're watching something on your television, you hit the pause button, and the moment B lifts his ball, and you say, "Okay, is there a penalty?" And it goes on, and the decision goes on to list and bullet points several factors that the committee would consider in making that determination, the distance of B's ball from A's line of putt, line on which A's ball is moving, the contours of the putting green, to make that determination. So ultimately, where A's ball winds up going does not affect the ruling, that the ruling is made before, in theory, A's ball comes to rest. So whether A's ball finishes three yards short of B's ball, where B's ball was, or it goes two yards beyond, or finishes five yards left, doesn't matter. You just hit the pause button, the moment B lifts the ball, and you say, "Okay, at that moment, is there a reasonable possibility that B's ball might have influenced the movement of A's?" And make the determination accordingly.
Yeah, it's not an intent-based rule, but in 16-1B/3 decision, the player for replacing his ball is exonerated because the act was unintentional. Could you help me?
Oh, yeah, well, Phil, first, let me finish this decision, then we'll jump in it, because that's a good point. Just, it's useful to keep in mind, the final paragraph of this decision, any doubt as to whether there's a reasonable possibility that lifting might have influenced is resolved against the player who lifted his ball. And sentences like that in the decisions are helpful to committees, because it helps, in your mind, it's a coin toss that this tells you what to do. And then Phil asked a good question with regards to 16-1B/3, which is a different, but, you know, on the surface, somewhat similar situation. What's the difference? Now, let's go through the facts. A's ball comes to rest on the putting green 20 feet from the hole, marks the position of, and lifts his ball so that B, whose ball is also on the putting green, can play first. While B's ball is in motion, A replaces his ball. B's ball strikes A's ball. Okay, well, first point is, does Rule 16-1B prohibit a player from replacing his ball while another ball is in motion?
No, it only says it's lifted.
Yeah, it doesn't. So for that reason, 16-1B does not apply, even though that is where this decision is located. So that means we have to look at other rules. So therefore, that's why we get into the intentional versus unintentional situations. If it's intentional, because no other rule could apply, and because it does fit the description of Rule 1-2, an intentional act for the purpose of influencing the movement of a ball, Rule 1-2 could apply if it was intentional. If it was unintentional, then as we'll see later, Rule 19 talks about such accidental corrections. So that is a fine line, but it's an important distinction. All right, Rule 16-1C talks about repair of other damage. And at first, you might say, "Wait a minute, why does this rule even need to be there?" Because then we talk about repair of ballmarks and hole plugs in 16-1A. And the answer is that 16-1A does discuss repair of ballmarks and old hole plugs, but only on the line of putt. Rule 16-1C takes a much broader perspective view and says, and provides that the player may repair an old hole plug or damage to the putting green whether or not the player's ball lies on the putting green. So this means, for example, if your ball is off the putting green, say you're on the fringe, and there's a ball mark on your line of play, since we're not on the putting green, now it's on that line of play and not line of putt, the player may repair the ball mark because it's on the putting green. So the determining factor there is the location of the ball mark and not the location of the ball. And also, it applies to situations where the ball is on the putting green and the ball mark is not on the line of putt. So, for example, let's say I have a slick 20-foot putt, and there's a ball mark one foot beyond the hole, that, and I want to repair the ball mark for what might seem like strange reasons, is maybe to help my ball go farther from the hole in case I miss it. But let's say that this rule allows me to repair that ball mark beyond the hole, even though it's not on my line of putt. And it goes on to say, well, among other things, it does create, have somewhat of an interesting exception here relating, really, to Rule 18 and the movement of the ball. If a ball or ball marker is accidentally moved in the process of repairing the ball marker or old hole plug, first replace the ball or ball marker, then we'll figure out if there's a penalty. There is no penalty if movement of the ball or ball marker is directly attributable to the specific act of repairing an old hole plug or damage to the putting green. So in other words, if it really almost was not possible to repair the ball mark without also moving the ball or ball marker, then there's no penalty. But if you're just being clumsy, then Rule 18, which provides, where the player himself did it, provides for one sort of penalty for the player for moving his ball in play. And we'll get into this a little bit under Rule 18, and also with directly attributable and exactly what that means. We'll go into that in more detail next time under Rule 20, where that phrase comes up more. Then, final paragraph of 16-1C, any other damage to the putting green must not be repaired if it might assist the player in a subsequent play of the hole. So again, if we turn back the clock to spike marks, we know that Rule 16-1A does not allow the player to repair spike marks on his line of putt. Now, that final paragraph of 16-1C also prohibits the player from repairing spike marks, say, beyond the hole, that if he thinks, gee, if I miss this putt, I'm going to have a three-footer coming back, and it'd be nice if I didn't have to putt through that group of spike marks, so I'm going to go ahead and tap that down now. This rule prohibits that, him from doing so. Okay, 16-1D regarding testing the surface of the putting green. First, note that this applies only during the stipulated round, but remember also that Rule 7-1B in stroke play places restrictions on testing the surface of the putting green before the round. So, but during the round, a player must not test the surface of any putting green by rolling a ball or roughening or scraping the surface. So this applies if I'm, say, walking down the sixth hole, I can't go over to the 12th hole and roll some balls toward that base hole location to see how putts are going to break. So I may not do that, but notice that the rule is very specific with the prohibited methods for testing the surface. You're only prohibited from testing the surface by roughening or scraping it, or by rolling a ball. If you do something else, for example, and you just place your hand flat on the ground to try to see how wet it is, or how firm it might be, if you can tell that difference, that by itself is not a breach of this rule. The exception is that between the play of two holes, it's okay to test the surface of any practice putting green and the last putting green unless the committee has prohibited such an action. And that exception's necessary and makes sense, because between holes, you're allowed to practice putting, right? So it'd be silly to say, "Well, you can practice putting, but you can't roll a ball." You have to allow the player to do both. But as we saw in Rule 7, a committee might prohibit that. Why might a committee prohibit it? Well, let's say the committee has dotted the next base hole location, doesn't want players rolling balls toward the next base hole location. That's when a committee might prohibit that. Now, one point to keep in mind with this rule is that it is an intent-based rule. And let's look at Decision 16-1D/2 for an example of that, and why that point matters. The player concedes his opponent's next stroke, knocks his ball away on the same line on which he must subsequently putt. Is this a breach of Rule 16-1D? Well, we know that a player normally can't just roll a ball on the green for that purpose, so if he knocks another ball back, he could gain the same information, so is that a breach? The answer, it's a question of fact whether or not the player's action was for the purpose of testing the surface of the putting green. The manner and apparent purpose would be the determining factors. So if he was simply being nice and returning the ball to the opponent, and that happened to be on his own line, then there's no breach. But if he did so for the purpose of seeing which way his putt would break, then he would be in breach of this rule. All right, Rule 16-1E, standing astride or on the line of putt. The player must not make a stroke on the putting green from a stance astride, or with either foot touching the line of putt, or an extension of that line behind the ball. All right, first point, this applies only when the ball lies on the putting green. So if a player, for some reason, wants to putt proquet style from the fringe, that's okay. And occasionally, you might have a player in a little bit of a bind, where, say, he's up against a tree, or he's in a corner formed by a boundary fence or boundary wall, where he might need to take such a stance in order just to advance the ball a few yards, and that's okay. That's okay, as long as the ball's not on the putting green, he's allowed to use such a stance. An exception, there's no penalty if the stance is inadvertently taken, meaning the player simply didn't realize what he was doing, or if the stance is taken, even intentionally, to avoid standing on another player's line of putt or prospective line of putt. So, for example, Arnold and I are playing together, and I hit my ball up near the hole, and I want to go ahead and tap in, but I don't, but if I were to take my normal stance, I'd be standing in Arnold's line, so I intentionally stand astride an extension of my line of putt behind the ball for that purpose of not standing in Arnold's line, then I'm okay. There's no breach of this rule. And this exception is important, it really gets to what the intent of the rule is. And the intent of the rule was to prohibit using, you know, proquet-style putting as a normal method for putting, that these inadvertent, or actually, wanting intentionally used for, but for a worthwhile purpose, is not a breach of this rule. Now, I'm just curious, has anyone here, and this exception was added somewhat recently, and before that, there were, unfortunately, some play, a number of situations each year where players would be penalized for really just being good guys and trying not to stay on someone else's line. All right, now, Rule 16-1F, making stroke while another ball is in motion. And this is a rule where you have to stop, think about it, think up an example, maybe even sketch something out on paper, to see exactly what this rule is getting at. The player must not make a stroke while another ball is in motion after a stroke from the putting green, except if it was his turn to play, there's no penalty. So let's go through several examples. And the first is that only one of the two balls needs to have been played from the putting green in order for this rule to apply. The second ball played while the ball is in motion from the putting green does not have to have been played from the putting green. So let's say Bill and I are playing together. Bill is 30 feet from the hole, I'm 15 feet from the hole. Bill is on the putting green, I am on or off the putting green, doesn't matter. Bill putts while his ball is in motion, I putt. Is there a penalty in that case? No? No? Wait, I'm sorry. Bill's 30 feet from the hole, I'm 15 feet from the hole. Bill putts, and Bill's on the putting green. Bill putts while his ball's in motion, I putt. Is there a penalty? Yes, I am penalized in that case. Okay, now, let's say my ball, 15 feet from the hole, is on the putting green. And let's say Bill's ball, 30 feet from the hole, is also on the putting green. So I putt, and first, while my ball is in motion, Bill putts. Is there any penalty in that case? Answer's no, because it was Bill's turn to play. It was Bill's turn to play, so no penalty for that. And to some degree, you could argue that this rule may well have a short life in terms of what it accomplishes. Because let's say in the case where, first case, where Bill's ball's 30 feet from the hole, my ball's 15 feet from the hole, Bill's ball's on the putting green. Bill putts, I putt while his ball's in motion. And if our balls collide, what is the ruling in that case? Well, let's see, let's get ahead of ourselves a little bit under 19-5B, and what rulings will that provide? Actually, at the top of page 298, if the ball, if the player's ball in motion after a stroke on the putting green is deflected or stopped by another ball in motion after a stroke, the player's stroke is canceled. So in that case, what does that mean? That means both of us would have to cancel and replay. So has Bill been somewhat disadvantaged? Well, possibly, because maybe he is, he made a great putt, and it was going to go in the hole, and now he has to try again. But ultimately, he's not going to be disadvantaged too much, because he's going to have another go at it. So that very, this rule comes up very, very infrequently in tournament play. In fact, has anyone here ever had an on-course ruling involving this? Which, again, says something, when you think about, especially between Bill and Gene, and how many possibly hundreds of thousands of rounds of golf they've officiated over, and that hasn't come up. But it does occasionally come up on old quizzes, that seems to be.
Well, that's, that was going to be my point. Why, if it never comes up, why do they always ask the question on the exam that everybody always gets wrong, on the closed book section? ask the question on the exam that everybody always gets wrong, on the closed book section? Here we go again. I'm on my, I'm on my always.
In a fifth-tier day, we don't want to hear any more of these. I always get that question wrong.
All right, I got it out of the way earlier, John.
It doesn't do yourself any favors to say that.
Did you say, in your example, that you would, one ball was 30 feet from the hole, on the green, and the other ball 15 feet, but on the fringe of the green?
And some of the examples I gave, it does not matter if the ball closer to the hole was on the green or off the green. And then in the example where Bill's ball's 30 feet from the hole, on the green, and he putts while his ball is in motion, I play, doesn't matter if my ball's on or off the putting green, as to whether I'm penalized. Well, what would matter in that case would be if my ball's on the putting green, so I would know whether I have to cancel and replay under Rule 19-5B. That's the one time that it'd matter. But for the purposes of this Rule 16-1F, it would not matter if the ball was on or off the putting green. All right, penalty for breach of this rule. So for all of these, all six sections, is the general penalty. So whether touching your line of putt, or as we talked about, not properly replacing your ball, or pairing spike marks, or a heel mark, all of that is the general penalty. Rule 16-2, ball overhanging the hole. First point to realize is that this rule applies to a very, very specific situation. And the principles of this rule should not be extended to any other situation on the golf course. This applies only when the ball overhangs the other the hole. If the ball is an inch away from the hole, this rule does not apply. And this rule saw, has seen quite an evolution over the middle part of the previous century, but now it's, I think, in a, in a good form. When part of a ball overhangs the lip, the player is allowed enough time to reach the hole without unreasonable delay, and then an additional 10 seconds to determine if the ball is at rest. If by then, the ball has not fallen in, it is deemed to be at rest. Ball subsequently falls into the hole, player is deemed to hold out with his last stroke, and must add a penalty stroke. Otherwise, there is no penalty. So several key points here. First, the player is allowed enough time to reach the hole without unreasonable delay. And this time, amount of time, out of necessity, is going to vary. That a player with a 10-foot putt is going to have, take less time to reach the hole than a player at a 20-foot putt, than a player who, say, was hitting a full five iron from the fairway. That amount of time is going to vary. And unfortunately, there's just no getting around that. But once each player's reached the hole, he's then allowed 10 seconds to see if the ball is at rest, and see if the ball falls in. If the ball has not fallen in at the end of 10 seconds, it is deemed to be at rest. And what's the significance of that? That means that, let's say, if you, if at the 12-second mark, you go ahead to tap the ball in, and the ball moves, that you're not considered to have played a moving ball. So this protects the player, because that was an old excuse that some players would use back in the 50s and 60s when they wait minutes for the ball to drop in and say, oh, well, you know, I can't, I'm not allowed to play a moving ball, so I have to wait, because the ball's still moving. Well, if the ball's still moving, odds are it's not going to move for one or two minutes and still not fall in. So by saying the ball's deemed to be at rest, that protects the player from playing a moving ball. And the ball falls in after that, he's considered to hold out with his last stroke, and will add a penalty stroke. And the math for this rule now works out well. So, for example, let's say that I hit my tee shot onto the green of a par three. I have a 10-foot putt for a two. I putt, ball comes to rest, overhangs the lip of the hole. I go up to the hole, and at eight seconds, the ball falls into the hole. So my score for the hole in that case is two. Now, same situation, hit up 10 feet from the hole, putt, ball overhangs the lip, I walk to the hole, and after 10 seconds, the ball has not fallen in, I tap the ball into the hole. Then my score for the hole is three. I putt from 10 feet for a two, ball overhangs the lip, I walk up, wait 10 seconds, ball is not falling in, but after 12 seconds, the ball does fall into the hole. In that case, what is my score?
Three.
Three also. So what does that mean? That means that once you reach the 10-second mark, that there's no incentive for the player to wait any longer. Whether the ball falls in on its own, or he taps it in, his score for the hole is going to be the same. So the whole rule works out well that way. All right, now let's go through some decisions. 16/1, mud on ball touches putting green, but ball itself does not touch the putting green. Players' ball lies off the putting green, overhanging but not touching the green. Clump of mud adhering to the ball touches the green. Is the ball considered to be on the green? Answer is no. But the key point here is to say that the, if a ball merely over, don't worry too much about the mud on the ball, but if the ball merely overhangs the putting green and is not on the putting green. Under the definition of putting green, there's no reference to the margin of the putting green extending vertically upwards. So this means the ball must physically touch the putting green's surface in order for it to be on the putting green. And why does that matter? Well, it will mainly matter in cases where a player might have a dirty ball and won't want to clean it. If his knowing whether he's on or off the putting green would determine his ability to clean the ball.
Sometimes what happens is that the way the green was cut, it might be, is the ball on the green, or is it off the green? In that case, it's up to the group to determine, okay, this is on the green, or what, no, wait a minute, no, it might be off the green, but it's the way the green was cut.
Yeah, yeah, that's a very good question, very realistic one, where often, the edge of the putting green is not entirely clear. It's not every day do the greens' mowers make a cleanup pass around it, around, and sometimes when they do, it's not always exactly the same spot. So you might have a fringe that doesn't have a clear edge. What determines the putting green? Well, that can be, frankly, that can be tough to call. And ultimately, it's up to the committee to make that decision. And players do care about this. Players often will call officials over to ask if their ball's on or off the putting green. And what to do, it's tough to say. I think in general, a good rule from is look at what the intention is of where the putting green is. That often you can tell, and often you don't want to just have one slightly stray mower path determine where the putting green is. That usually, usually it's clear what the intention is for the putting green to be, and go by that. But it's a type of thing, as an official when making this determination, especially when it deals with the mowing pattern, I would probably err on the side of the player. And if it's doubt in my mind, I'd probably say the ball's on the putting green.
I mean, 98%, 99% of the times, it's one percent.
No, it does come up. Yeah, it might even come up more than 1%. And it's, it comes up a fair amount.
It was one of two rulings I made at a course called Aaron Hills during the US.
All our fringes are nice and clean.
The fringes were cut so short that it was almost indecipherable.
Well, you're right. And actually, and that's a good point, because that's something, actually, last year, at some competitions, it was, we had kind of a different issue. And I think at the Marquette Tournament, as I recall, who was, I'm trying to remember who the official was, there was a ruling on the 10th hole. What's that? It wasn't your ruling on the 10th hole, because it involved the putting green. I know yours was on 10. But, but the fringes are cut quite short, and depending on where you're standing, it's hard to tell where the green stops and where the fringe starts.
The forward was that way.
What's that?
Forward, or the back, back right of forward was that way.
Yeah, so sometimes, for that reason, that can be tricky. And the worst-case scenario is where a player thinks he's on the green, lifts it, and then he realizes, geez, actually, when he lifts it out from a different angle, realizes he's an inch off the green. So that can come up also. All right, let's see. Moving on through the decisions, a few, 16-1A/5, touching inside of hole. This provides that if the player touches the inside of the hole for, regardless of the reason, he has touched his line of putt and is in breach of this rule. And the last sentence is helpful, because it clarifies that line of putt includes the hole, except in the unusual case when a player makes a stroke from the putting green away from the hole. You know, perhaps there's an L-shaped green, and a player's, because of a bunker, is not putting towards the hole, he's just putting to the corner, and then on his next putt, he's going to putt towards the hole. Let's see, Decision 16-1A/8 just confirms that there's no specific method by which a player must remove loose impediments, that as long as he doesn't press anything down, any method will work. And, let's.
We're out there for a second.
Then, actually, then let's look at Decision, and we talked earlier about Decision 16-1A/12, about walking on the line of putt. But let's look at the next one, 16-1A/13. An opponent, fellow competitor, one of their caddies accidentally steps on, damages the player's line of putt. What's the ruling? Well, first, we know that Rule 1-2 does not apply because this was accidental. If it was intentional, then Rule 1-2 could apply. Now, in equity, the player may have the line of putt restored to its original condition. Again, this is another example of, we saw some decisions last week under Rule 13-2 that established the principle that generally, the player is entitled to what his stroke gave him. So in this case, it says the player's entitled to rely on line of putt he had when his ball came to rest, and the line of putt may be restored by anyone. So again, just another example of that decision. And one situation where this can come up in match play, there's a match play, remember that whoever's farther from the hole plays next period. Is, let's say that Andy and I are playing against each other in a match, and our balls are near each other, and it's, but I am away from the hole. It's my turn to putt, but in order that when I putt, I have to stand, my left foot is going to be on Andy's line of putt. So in stroke play, what might players do in that case? You know, they might, you know, they might just as a courtesy, say, hey, here, why don't you play first, so I won't damage your line. Say, you know, that's okay. But now, let's say, match play, you don't really have that option. So what this establishes, provides a remedy for Andy, that if, when I stand on his line of putt, to make my putt, that if I damage his, he's allowed to restore it to its original condition. So if I create any new damage, he can repair that damage. And that does come up occasionally, as I said, especially in match play. Let's see, we talked about Decisions 16-1B/4. We discussed Decision 16-1B/2. And the rest of the decisions are relatively straightforward. We are definitely not going to discuss Decision 16-2/4 for obvious reasons. So.
Talking about 16-1A/11.
16-1A/11, Tim, okay?
I read it, it sure sounds like a contradiction.
Okay, all right. This is a good decision, and it touches on 16-1A/11. And it's closely related to a decision under 13-2. It's cross-referenced after 13-2/26. So let's go through the 16 decision. A player can't determine whether a raised tuff of grass on his line of putt is loose or is attached to its roots. And why is that important? Because if it's loose, it would be a loose impediment, so the player could remove it. But if it's attached, then the player has to deal with it, and he can't touch or move it. The player brushes the raised tuff lightly with his hand to make a determination, and discovers that the tuff is attached. What's the ruling? Well, this decision establishes the principle that a player is entitled to touch and move a natural object on his line of putt for the specific purpose of determining whether the object is loose, as long as, if it's not loose, it does not become detached, and it's returned to its original position. So it's a similar theme to, in 13-2/26, except in this case, you know, I think, I'm assuming, Tim, that your point is that, wait a minute, well, 13-2 talks about improving, but 16-1A is more specific, and it prohibits simple touching, and this is touching. So why isn't this a breach of the rule? Because the rule doesn't allow him to do that. And the reason it's not a breach of the rule is because of this decision. Without this decision, it would be a breach of the rule, absolutely. And this decision really says, well, we're going to let the player determine the status of this, as long as nothing is improved for his, to his benefit.
What's the last paragraph?
Okay. Except as otherwise permitted in the rules, if a player touches or removes a natural object other than to determine whether it's loose, and it is found to be attached, the player cannot avoid a breach by returning the object to its original position. So you're saying, is that a contradiction of the previous paragraph? Well, it is, but the previous paragraph has a very narrow application, where it says, okay, it's okay to touch or move the object for the specific purpose of determining whether it's loose. And then, in the final paragraph, it says if he touches or moves a natural object other than to determine whether it's loose. So the player's intention in touching that object is the difference between, between those two paragraphs.
John, 16-1A, well, a player walks on his line. As an official, and you're observing the play going on, a situation occurred in, this was a USGA junior qualifier, one of our players who drew a bay, had about a 40, 50 footer downhill at third hole, and needed two putts in order to qualify for match play in the final hole. Parents are there and so forth. And he goes down and surveys the putt. He gets over, now it's 40, 50 foot downhill. He goes over to the left side, and crosses over the other side, looks at that, comes back, puts it down about 10, and like, his parents run out and hug him like that, he made the cut. An official, committee man, junior committee captain, running down from the side of the hill, he's probably 100 yards away or so forth, and walks over and walks up to him, and right in his face, takes his fingers, says, add two strokes, you know, for touching your line of putt, walking your, walking your line of putt. And, you know, so he scored hard. And we didn't know this at the time, like that, so all of a sudden, so his score posted was two shots higher than what he should have scored. And PJ Bulli was the official, was the USGA staff person, and he mentioned, he said, who made that call? And we said, well, one of the committee, you know, people was officiating. And he said, well, it has to stand, the rule, but, you know, he will not be called back, the official, or. But, you know, from 100 yards away, you're an official observing this play, and you see a player cross over and surveying effort and stuff. Did he be obligated to walk down, hey, you walked in the line of putt? I mean, you didn't do so intentionally.
Yeah, well, and the, and the question was, or the story involved a player who had a 50-foot putt, and who crossed his line of putt while surveying it, and was penalized. And Gene, I think your question is, you know, does that make sense? And obviously, based on this decision, you have to get into the players. There are several points. First, did he actually walk on his line of putt? And if he did so, did he do so intentionally or accidentally? And if he did so accidentally, did he improve his line of putt? And I think it's safe to say as a starting premise that most golfers don't want to walk on their line of putt, because that's only going to worsen it, right? That he, the reason he That he, the reason he probably walked on it was just it was the shortest way from point A to point B. And often, when players do that, you see them almost try to go to great lengths, almost to leap across their line of putt or another player's line of putt. But, you know, and all of those are simple questions of fact. So did he walk on his line of putt? If so, accidental or intentional? If accidental, was anything improved? And just kind of walk, work your way through that.
I could have, if it only like this, that would be overcome if the PGA, if you use the PGA Bullock, is it, has it ever happened? Probably not.
Oh, okay, can a penalty that's been applied ever be rescinded? Yes, and it depends on the circumstances, that if the committee determines that that penalty was incorrect, then they may rescind that penalty as long as they're consistent with Rule 34. So for example, that means that they can't do so after the competition is closed. So let's say, if it's a, for simplicity, let's say, a 72-hole stroke play tournament. And in the second round, a player is told he has a two-stroke penalty. In the third round, the committee becomes aware of it and the committee says, gee, that was a wrong ruling, he shouldn't have been penalized at all. Then the committee, at that point, can go back and rescind that penalty even from the second round.
That actually happened to Steve Stricker at the Western Open. My question is, in regards to Rule, the exception to Rule 16-1E, the last sentence says, you know, is avoided, taken to avoiding on another player's line of putt or prospective line of putt? I was wondering if you could just elaborate.
Okay, yeah, that's something that came up a lot, where frankly, I'd never heard of even the expression, the so-called through line, until some players at the US Women's Open almost got into fisticuffs about it back around '03 or so, that, but it's something that, among other things, shows, you know, the attention of detail that really good players have that I don't have. Maybe there's a connection there. But that is, that really good players aren't concerned solely with their line of putt, they're also concerned about if they miss, where the ball's going to go. So this, well, let's say, for example, Bill and I are playing together and I have a one-foot putt I want to go ahead and tap in. And my ball and Bill's ball are on opposite sides of the hole. So I would not be standing on Bill's line of putt to tap in that, on my one-foot putt. However, I might be standing on his so-called through line, the line that his ball, if he missed, would take beyond the hole. And so if I don't want to do that, then if I, I could either lift it or I could take an awkward stance, stand astride and tap in, then there's no penalty. So the prospective line of putt usually involves the so-called through line beyond the hole. Okay, on to Rule 17. Rule 16 dealt with the putting green and Rule 17 deals specifically with the flagstick, which is found on the putting green. So these two rules are paired together. First, let's remember the definition of the flagstick. It's a movable straight indicator to indicate the position of the hole. It is a movable obstruction, but as you'll see, it's a special movable obstruction, so special in fact that it has its own rule. So let's go through this rule regarding the player's rights and prohibitions with what he may do with the flagstick. 17-1, before making a stroke from anywhere on the course, so it's on or off the putting green, the player may have the flagstick attended at the hole, removed, or held up to indicate the position of the hole. When the flagstick is being held up, note that in order for there not to be a breach of Rule 8-2A, the flagstick must be held up directly above the hole. So for example, the caddy may not, say, if you're in a deep greenside bunker at Blue Mound, the caddy may not take the flagstick to the edge of the green, hold it there during the stroke. He may do so before the stroke, but not during the stroke. But he may hold the flagstick directly above the hole during the stroke. And if the flagstick is not attended, removed, or held up before the stroke, it must not be attended, removed, or held up during the stroke, but while the ball is in motion, if doing so might influence the movement of the ball. So similar language to what we saw in Rule 16-1B, that regarding moving the flagstick while a ball's in motion, if doing so might influence the movement, and it's not based on intent. So and then let's look at this in conjunction with 17-2 and go over a couple of examples. If an opponent in match play or fellow competitor in stroke play without the player's authority or prior knowledge attends, removes, or holds up the flagstick during the stroke or while the ball is in motion, and that act might influence the movement of the ball, then that other player, the opponent or fellow competitor, incurs the applicable penalty for breach of this rule, which we'll see is loss of hole or two strokes. So note that fine, very specific time limit. This, Rule 17-2 only applies during the stroke or while the ball is in motion. So if, let's say, Bill's in a bunker, he's grinding over his bunker shot. Before he plays, I go over and remove the flagstick without his knowledge. Is there any breach of this rule in that case? No. The answer is no. I mean, that's probably not good manners for me. I should, you know, first ask Bill if he wants me to remove the flagstick, but I'm not in breach of this rule because I removed the flagstick before the stroke was made. So one interesting point or an example of this occurred at the Canadian Open in, I believe it was 2003, when Paul Azinger and Fred Funk were playing together, and I forget who did what, but one player had a downhill chip shot. He plays while his ball is still in motion, just trickling beyond the hole, it's already beyond the hole, heading farther from the hole down the hill. The fellow competitor's caddy goes over and removes the flagstick.
You should be penalized.
That's right. So first point, under the current rule, is there any penalty in that case?
No.
The answer is no, because the ball is beyond the hole and it's moving away from the hole. So is there a reasonable possibility that removal of a flagstick might influence the movement of the ball? No. But under the old rules, as Ken said, that was a penalty, and that didn't make any sense at all. In fact, and what was especially frustrating is, I believe this incident occurred in September of 2003. Well, 2004 was a rules change year, and the change to this rule had already been agreed and was going to address that, provide for no penalty. And that was already in the books, and the printing presses may well have even been going by then. There's a done deal. But it was still 2003, so PGA Tour still had to apply the rules of golf for 2003, and they had to penalize a player whose caddy removed the flagstick. And that was a shame, but it shows, one, the timetable for making rules changes and when rules changes become effective, and also show that that was a good change, because that was a silly result, and no one would ever think that that was a good result. All right, on to 17-3, ball striking flagstick or attended. Player's ball must not strike the flagstick when it's attended. Well, and actually, before we go into this, let's jump back to 17-1, 17-2, and go over some situations that every now and then, well, let's say that Andy and I are playing together in stroke play, either form play, and I have a 60-foot putt. And I know that there's a very, very, very small chance that my ball's going to strike the flagstick. So while Andy is raking the bunker, they just played from, I go ahead and putt with the flagstick in the hole, because I need it to see where the hole is. But Andy, knowing something about the rules, knowing that there's a penalty if my ball strikes the flagstick, and Andy being a good guy, doesn't want me to incur a penalty, rushes over while my ball's in motion and removes the unattended flagstick from the hole. And let's say he's with fellow competitors. What's the ruling in that case?
You're going to three shot putt.
Yeah, and in that situation, Andy wouldn't, well, wouldn't incur a two-stroke penalty. And again, what we would still have to look at is, this might influence language. So and, so you take, so you freeze the moment that Andy removes the flagstick and say, okay, given what my ball was doing, looked like it would do at the time, could his removal of the flagstick have influenced the movement of my ball? And the answer, very likely, is going to be yes, and that that's the whole reason he's removing the flagstick, because he's concerned my ball might strike it. So that's a case where unfortunately, Andy being a good guy, is going to be penalized. It's also a case where, you know, where knowing the rules pays off and knowing that you can't do that can pay off. Rule 17-3, player's ball must not strike the flagstick when it's attended, removed, or held up. So the flagstick when it's being attended in the hole, when it's been removed and it's a line on the green or on the fringe, or when it's being held up, or the ball must not strike the person attending the flagstick. And also, we just saw that example with Andy, the ball must not strike the flagstick in the hole unattended when the stroke has been made from the putting green. Penalty for breach of this rule is the general penalty. So in stroke play, for example, if a player putts, his ball strikes an unattended flagstick, two-stroke penalty, and he will play the ball as it lies. So 17-3 is a fairly straightforward and well-understood rule. Now for 17-4.
Does it, the 17-3 supersede 19-3?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so good point. So let's say, for example, Phil, you and I are playing a match against each other. And I ask you to attend the flagstick for me. And I putt and my ball strikes you. Then you have, what's interesting, you have two rules putting heads. The Rule 17-3 would say, hey, wait a minute, John's ball struck the person attending the flagstick, he loses the hole. But then you have Rule 18-3 that says, hey, but wait a minute, on the other hand, this is match play, John's ball was accidentally deflected by his opponent, that means John has the option to cancel and replay. So which overrides the other? And the key is, in this case, 17-3 overrides. And I believe that 19-3 has an exception even to that. Yeah, it does. So that's the case where we need something to tell us which rule overrides the other. All right, Rule 17-4, similar to Rule 16-2. Rule 17-4 covers a very specific situation and does not apply to any other situation on the course. And that is, this rule applies only when the ball is resting against the flagstick in the hole and the ball is not yet hold. So part of the ball is likely below the level of the lip of the hole, but all of it is not yet below the level of the lip. So it's not yet hold. The player or someone authorized by him may move or remove the flagstick. If the ball falls into the hole, the player's deemed to have pulled out his last stroke. Otherwise, the ball, if moved, must be placed on the lip of the hole without penalty. And almost in every case, if you're least bit careful, you can get the ball to fall into the hole. But if you're either not careful, if you're unlucky and the ball does not fall into the hole and say, rolls a foot away from the hole, you must place the ball on the lip of the hole. Now, one point that's interesting with this rule is note that for some reason, Rule 17-4 does not have a penalty statement, which begs the question, which is answered in decision 17-4/4, of what happens if the player removes the flagstick, the ball rolls away from the hole, and instead of replacing the ball as required, he plays the ball from where it came to rest, let's say, a foot from the hole. What's the penalty? Well, he's played from a wrong place, because this rule required him to place it on the lip of the hole, but there is no penalty. Well, this is an example where, of the use of Rule 3-5, the general penalty rule says that unless otherwise provided, the penalty for breach of rule in stroke play is two strokes. So the player would wind up with a two-stroke penalty in stroke play, and in match play, you would lose the hole using Rule 2-6. All right, now, let's look at some of the decisions under 17. Decision 17-1/5 is an interesting one in that it's a very common question and misconception that people have, that it seems like a fairly unusual and innocuous situation, but people, you know, have strong views about this, many of which are, turn out to be incorrect. Player has a short putt, and let's say he hit his bunker shot up near the hole six inches, so he's going to go up, tap in, and then get the flagstick for the other players in this group. Is it okay for him to remove the flagstick, say with his left hand, tap in with his right hand? Is that okay? Yes, provided the flagstick has been removed from the hole and the ball therefore doesn't strike it. If the ball were to strike it, then a breach of Rule 17-3A would occur. But some people have some notion that you can't attend the flagstick for yourself or something like that, but this is perfectly fine to do.
Just once?
Well, see, see, Phil, Ken learns from his mistakes.
I'm not there yet.
All right, some other interesting decisions, 17-3/6, marking position of hole with club. Sometimes this will happen, let's say, Ken and I are playing together, I remove the flagstick, Ken's 30 feet from the hole, but he says, John, you know, I can't quite see the hole, will you show it to me? So I say, sure, and I, because the flagstick is now 15 feet away, I place my putter in the hole to show him the position of the hole. Is that okay? Yes, but with a twist, that a putter used to mark the position of the hole must be treated as a flagstick for the purposes of applying the rules. So if Ken's ball winds up striking my putter when it's being used for that purpose, Ken is penalized. Now, 17-4/1, another example where ignorance of the rules can hurt players. Player's ball is resting against the flagstick, but it's not hold because all, it's not below the lip. However, the player incorrectly believes the ball is hold and therefore picks it up. What's the ruling? All right, well, first, as we'll see under Rule 20-1, and also as we saw with 16-1B, you're allowed to lift your ball from the putting green, but you also have to mark the ball's position. In this case, the ball, player didn't mark the position of the ball, so he incurs one penalty stroke. He must replace the ball, and where would he replace it? He would actually replace it exactly where it was, against the flagstick. So he'd put the flagstick, if the flagstick's been removed, he would place the flagstick and try to recreate the situation, and then exercises lights under Rule 17-4 and try to jiggle the flagstick so the ball falls into the hole. So any questions on Rule 17? Yeah, there you go.
John, does a flagstick lose its identity and become an obstruction if it's removed from the hole and placed in the rough? We had a situation in the state amateur a few years ago at Old Lake Green where one of our Hall of Fame players was on the putting green and putted the ball, and there was a steep slope in the green, the ball caught the smoke, rolled off the green, into the fringe, into the rough, and came to rest against the flagstick. And I think it was just after the rule was changed, because his fellow competitor sort of picked up the flagstick, but they throw it, I think they were afraid to pick it up or maybe they wanted to see if it was a penalty. But what is the rule or how is, I know it's a two-stroke penalty, but under what, under what circumstance?
All right, so the question is, flagstick's removed from the hole and is placed off the green in the rough. Player hits a wild putt, it goes off the green into the rough and strikes the flagstick, so it's penalized. And it's so, under what rule? And the answer is, yes, he is going to be penalized, just under 17-3, under A, player's ball must not strike the flagstick when it is removed. So even though it's off the putting green, it's still a removed flagstick and there's a penalty for striking it. So, and it's... So, and it's difficult to say, one way to look at it is the flagstick is always an obstruction, but it's obstruction has a special status under the rules, especially under this rule. So there is going to be a penalty for striking it. And, you know, I'm glad you mentioned that, Gary, because while we're on it, let's just jump ahead a little bit to make reference to it, to rule 24-1A, and the final paragraph of that rule. When a ball is in motion, an obstruction that might influence the movement of the ball, other than equipment of any player, or the flagstick, when attended, removed, or held up, must not be moved. So in that case, and as you alluded to, this was a relatively recent rules change, could a fellow competitor rushed over and lifted that removed flagstick while the ball's in motion? Answer, under this section of 24, the answer is yes, he could have.
If he did remove the flagstick from that position, after the ball hit it, and it took three people to find it, I mean, he was a little pissed.
So that's a case where being a nice guy, like Andy was trying to do with an unattended flagstick, but if Andy did what he did with a removed flagstick, you've been okay. It's just an unattended flagstick, you can't move while the ball's in motion.
Kind of hole locations, yeah.
Gary was the rule sufficient.
Yeah, I was going to say, Ken, as you said, if it took a while just to find the ball, that to me, I'm thinking, okay, hole location, speed of the green, quality of the putt, and a lot, a lot must have gone wrong there.
It took a while not to find the ball, but to find the place.
That's what I meant.
Because it became a challenge.
That's what I meant. I didn't mean the ball.
Okay, got it.
John, what rule was that called?
24-1A, the final paragraph of that rule, with movable instructions.
And can anybody move that flagstick, or only the person who was intended?
Actually, anyone may move the flagstick in that case. All right, any other questions on 17? All right, well, let's go through 18, and then we'll take a break. All right, rules 18 and 19, it can, with rules 18 and 19, can be helpful to look at those, these two rules as a pair, because the two rules have a similar structure in terms of, section one deals with when outside agency is involved, section two of each rule deals with whether the player or his caddie or partners involved, section three with the opponent, and so forth. And so they have a parallel structure, and they just deal with different fact situations. Rule 18 deals with the ball at rest, it's been moved, and rule 19 deals with a ball in motion that has been deflected. But it is helpful to look at these two rules together. And with 18, as we talk about, since everything in rule 18 deals with movement of the ball, although also, as we'll see, there is, it also addresses the intentional touching of a ball, even if the ball is not moved. Keep in mind the definition of moved, and that is, a ball is considered a move when it leaves position A and comes to rest in a different position, in position B. It returns to position A, point A, that it's not considered a move, which means therefore in most cases that this rule does not apply. Now, one common theme with this rule is that in each of these six situations, when a ball has been moved, the ball must be replaced. In some cases, there's a penalty, in some cases, there's not a penalty. And the penalty varies as to who gets it. But the key, the common factor is, in each case, the ball must be replaced. So when one of these situations comes up, it's helpful, I think, first to replace the ball, and then to think about whether there's a penalty. All right, 18-1, if the ball at rest is moved by an outside agency, there's no penalty to anyone, whether the player or the outside agency, and the ball must be replaced. So remember, an outside agency is any agency not part of the player's side, or in match play, not part of the match. So what outside agencies are capable of moving the ball at rest? It could be an animate one, such as a spectator, a dog, a squirrel. It could be, say, a pine cone falling off a tree. There's no penalty, and the ball must be replaced. And this is an example where, again, it's helpful to force yourself to keep an open mind, and to remember that many people and objects can fit under more than one definition. So if a pine cone falls on and moves your ball, while that pine cone is a loose impediment, it's also an outside agency. And by realizing it's also an outside agency, then you know that rule 18-1 applies, so the player must replace the ball. And one point also, before we get too far into this rule, is just with the word replaced, that next session under rule 20, we'll talk about various methods a player will use to replace a ball. And it's helpful, at least to appreciate, that replace does not always mean place. As you'll see, sometimes, in fact, maybe perhaps many times, a player will replace his ball by dropping it, by dropping it. And we'll go into details with that in rule 20 next time. But for the purposes of this, it can be helpful, sometimes when you see the word replaced, to think of the word return instead. You're returning the ball to its original position, and that rule 20-3 will tell you how to return the ball. Do you return it by placing it, or do you return it by dropping it, or by doing something else? So just a point to keep in mind. The note 18-1 provides, it's a question of fact, whether a ball has been moved by an outside agency. In order to treat it as such, it must be known or virtually certain that an outside agency has moved the ball. And we'll get into the standard of knowledge and virtual certainty in the next session, where it has, where it comes up more often under rules 24 through 26 in particular. But without such knowledge or certainty, the player must proceed under, well, play the ball as it lies, or if he can't find the ball, proceed under stroking distance. So in other words, what this is saying, if you think you hit your tee shot down the middle of the fairway, and you can't find it, you can't just assume that somebody or something came and took your ball. Needs to be knowledge that that happened, or you need to be virtually certain that that is what happened. All right, rule 18-2, and as we saw under, just recently under rule 16-1C, and we'll see in other rules, 18-2A comes up a lot. This deals with a situation where the player, his partner or either of their caddies, moves the ball or touches it purposely, although the player is allowed to do so in the act of addressing the ball, or causes the ball to move. So that last one, causes the ball to move, could be a case where, let's say, the player's stand-up bag falls inches from the ball, and that causes the ball to move, even though there was no direct contact between the bag and the ball, that the circumstances establish a clear link between the movement of the ball, between the falling of the bag and movement of the ball. So in all of these situations, the player incurs one penalty stroke, then just as we saw with rule 18-1, he must replace the ball. The one time he doesn't have to replace the ball is if the movement occurs after the player's begun the backswing or the stroke itself, and the stroke is made. And this tends to be more of an issue with 18-2B than 18-2A, and still applies. However, notice a list of several circumstances in which there's no penalty if the player accidentally causes his ball to move. Notice these bullet points are really just cross-references to other rules. So to get the full story of the circumstances in which there's no penalty, you really need to go to these rules themselves for that. For example, the second bullet point is, there's no penalty if the movement occurred in repairing an old hole plug or a ball mark. But you really need to go to rule 16-1C for the whole story, because remember, that imposes the standard of directly attributable. There's no penalty only if the movement of the ball was directly attributable to the repair of the ball mark or hole plug. So in some of these cases, yeah, there's that directly attributable standard, in others, there's not. So we won't go through all of these. Some of these we've seen, most of these we will see coming up. So 18-2A, several applications. Common one, searching for your ball on the rough, you accidentally kick and move it. One-stroke penalty, replace the ball. Situation where a player lifts his ball as he thinks it's on the fringe of the putting green, turns out he's, or as he thinks it's on the putting green, turns out he was on the fringe. So therefore, there was no rule that allowed him to lift his ball, so therefore, rule 18-2A would apply. So he incurs one penalty stroke. Causes the ball to move, the bag falling down near the ball, and that causes the ball to move. In each case, one penalty stroke, replace the ball. All right, rule 18-2B, ball moving after address. First, let's remind ourselves of the definition of address. The player has addressed the ball when he's grounded the club immediately behind the ball. So if the player's ball in play moves after he's addressed it, the player is deemed to have moved the ball and incurs a penalty of one stroke. So if my ball's in the fairway, I ground the club behind the ball, and the ball moves, what this rule effectively is saying is that it's more than just a coincidence, the ball moved when it did. The odds are very strong that the act of my placing the club so close to the ball is what caused the ball to move. So that's why the player is deemed to have moved the ball, and therefore, just as with rule 18-2A, there's a one-stroke penalty, and the ball must be replaced unless the movement occurs after the player's begun the backswing or the stroke, and the stroke is ultimately made. So go through a couple of examples of that. Player's ball is on the putting green, and this seems to happen a lot on the putting green, because with the short height of cut, the ball is more like, more susceptible to movement than if the ball is nestled in taller grass. On the putting green, the player grounds his club immediately behind the ball, takes, then he takes a stance, and then the wind, all right, that's the wind out of it for now, but then, let's just say he notices the ball rolls slightly, a quarter of an inch. That case, what's the ruling? One penalty stroke, replace the ball. Now, player's on the putting green, he addresses the ball, he starts his backswing, the ball moves, then he splustered, and he stops. At that point, same thing, one penalty stroke, replace the ball. So the key is that there is still a penalty for the ball moving during his backswing. The only thing that matters with the timing of the movement of the ball is if he continued the swing. So let's go over that situation now. Ball's on the putting green, the player addresses the ball, starts his backswing, the ball moves, the ball comes to rest, and he finishes his stroke. In that case, total penalty of one stroke. There is no requirement to replace the ball because the ball moved, started to move during his swing, and he did not discontinue his swing, and he ultimately made the stroke. Now, let's look at the exception, which was added in 2012, which is, and it's an important one. If it's known or virtually certain that the player did not cause this ball to move, this rule does not apply. So let's look at decision 18-2B/1 for some further clarification on that.
Written in here, right after that, that another agency caused the ball to move.
Yep, very good. So, and that's essentially, Ken, what the decision says. So let's go through that. Player addresses ball, and it moves. It's uncertain what caused the ball to move, as the conditions at the time were calm. There were no outside agencies present, and the player did nothing obvious to cause the ball to move. The player believed that, and must have moved as a result of the effects of gravity, and therefore, the exception should apply. What's the ruling? Well, the ruling unfortunately is that the player incurs one penalty stroke and must replace the ball. And the key is the second paragraph of the answer. The effects of gravity do not satisfy the exception to rule 18-2B. The exception applies only when it's known or virtually certain the player did not cause the ball to move. In order to meet this standard, and this is the key sentence of the decision, must be known or virtually certain that some other observable factor, wind, water, or an outside agency caused the ball to move. So, or narrowly, let's go back to our definitions, wind and water are not outside agencies, right? So ordinarily, if, say, wind or water moves your ball, what happens to it? Well, we know, since they're not outside agencies, rule 18-1 does not apply. Does any other section of this, of rule 18 apply? The answer is no, it does not. So by default, since no section of rule 18 tells us to replace the ball as moved by wind or water, then by default, you play the ball as it lies if wind or water has moved the ball. So what this says, does say is that, obviously, if an outside agency moves the ball, let's say, for example, a ball from another hole comes flying in and strikes that ball, then obviously, we're going to have that rule supersede rule 18-2B. But also, even in a case where if wind or water causes the ball to move after address, there is no penalty under rule 18-2B, and what would the player do? So let's say, on a very, very windy day, player addresses his ball on the putting green, and the ball moves, and it's clear that wind is what caused the ball to move. What would be the, and you're called in to make a ruling, what would be the thought process that you'd go through? First, you'd say, okay, did the player address the ball? Okay, and you determine, yes, you did address the ball. Okay, then you say, okay, did, is it clear that something else caused the ball to move? Is it clear that wind caused the ball to move? And if the answer is no, it's not that windy, it's not clear that wind caused the ball to move, and it's not clear that anything else caused the ball to move, then what would you do as an official?
One stroke.
One stroke, penalty, replace the ball. But then, let's say, very windy, so you say, okay, it is evident that wind caused the ball to move, so that means there's no penalty under rule 18-2B. Okay? So then, where, from where does the player make his next stroke? From where the ball comes to rest, from its new position. And that's an important part, that's not necessarily intuitive, you kind of have to force yourself to think through this a little bit. But if there's no penalty under 18-2B, and wind did in fact cause the ball to move, player plays the ball from its new position, whether good or bad, whether closer to the hole or farther from the hole. So this decision is so important, especially that last sentence, I would make a note of this decision right next to the exception in your book.
John, could you go over the, if the ball moves back? My. You're over the ball, and you're beginning your stroke.
Okay.
And the ball moved.
Okay. Okay, all right, let's go through it. So a few variations. Let's say my ball is on a slope, and I'm concerned the ball might move, so I do not ground my club, I don't address the ball. I start my backswing, the ball moves, and I strike the ball. What's the ruling in that case? First, is there any penalty in that situation? And I address the ball, so I'm not deemed to have caused the ball to move. And let's say, and in fact, and this is a good point worth bringing up, that just because rule 18-2B does not apply, does not always mean that rule 18-2A does not apply. Sometimes, the player could have done something else to have caused the ball to move, in which case, 18-2A would apply. But if I haven't done anything else, and the ball, and I haven't addressed the ball, rule 18-2 does not apply. And because of when the ball started to move, I'm not going to be penalized under rule 14 for playing a moving ball. So in that case, is there any penalty at all? In that case, there would be no penalty at all. That's where I am, when I have not addressed the ball. So now, let's say, ball's on a slope, I address the ball, I ground the club. So now, let's say, ball's on a slope, I address the ball, I ground the club. And during my backswing, the ball starts to move. If I stop my backswing, then it's a one-stroke penalty and I have to replace the ball. But if I address the ball, ball starts to move during my backswing, I continue to make a stroke, then I do have one penalty stroke under 18-2B and nothing else. That I'm not required to replace the ball because of when the ball started to move, but I do still have a penalty stroke for the ball moving after address. Does that help?
But that might be hit, but you continued, you still didn't hit the ball.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the key is that the reason I was not required to replace the ball in that case was because of when the ball started to move and the fact that I continued to make the stroke.
Well, it's under green and it's moving while you're making your stroke. And you hit the ball, ball is in motion, and you hold it. Highly unlikely for this to happen. You add one, you're adding one stroke. You hold the ball, you hold, let's say you did that, you had a four, well, now you have a five.
Yeah, if you had addressed the ball and then the ball moved during your backswing and you continued and you made the stroke, then you count the stroke and you add one penalty stroke.
Couple of years ago, in the British Open with Adam Scott, on some 15 or 16 hole, he did not address the ball, off the green, on steep slope, and put three or four very hard practice swings about a foot of the ball. And then he walked up to view his landing area and shortly, immediately when he turned away and started walking, the ball moved about a foot and a half. He didn't see it, the official didn't see it. Then he continued to walk and looked back towards the ball and the ball moved again. Because it apparently hadn't come to rest completely. He saw it move at that time, called the official over and the official said, you did nothing caused the ball to move, play it from that spot. Okay, and so if, and they didn't do anything about it, but if somebody on TV had seen that, another rules official, and determined that he caused his ball to move. Because the rules official told him that he didn't cause the ball to move. And when, but before he signed his card and they went in and they determined that he did by picking those very aggressive practice swings most by, in that case, he would only have, would he only have just a long shot penalty and not a, not a one plus two equals two?
Yeah, you know, that's a good and realistic question involving Adam Scott. I think that was at Litham, where let's say, just to simplify the question, a player takes several hard practice swings near the ball and then the ball moves. The official there says, no penalty, play the ball from its new location. But then later, perhaps through the aid of video, the committee determines, well, actually, the player had caused the ball to move with those practice swings because of the proximity to the ball and the hardness of the practice swings that caused the ball to move. Could the committee go back and retrospectively impose a penalty? The answer to that's yes. And then the question is, what penalty would be imposed? And they would impose a one-stroke penalty. That they would impose the one-stroke penalty under 18-2A for move, causing the ball to move, but no additional penalty for failing to replace the ball because he didn't replace it at the direction of the referee. So that's, that's it.
That's similar to what happened last year with us at Ozak.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Where he can impose the penalty under 27-1, but now it's raining from a low place. But let's not get into it.
All right, and we'll go through some examples or some decisions of this. So let's continue with the rule itself of 18-3, which covers what the ruling is when the opponent or the opponent's caddy or the opponent's equipment causes the player's ball to move. Notice that this rule is broken into two sections depending as to whether this movement occurred during search. So under 18-3A, if during search for a player's ball, an opponent, caddy, or his equipment, or opponent, opponent's caddy or opponent's equipment moves the ball, touches it, or causes it to move, there's no penalty. Ball is moved, it must be replaced. Okay, so that's nice and that's consistent with 18-1, if an outside agency moves the ball, even though these items obviously are not outside agencies. Now, contrast that with 18-3B. If other than during search for the player's ball, the opponent moves the ball, the opponent incurs a penalty of one stroke and the ball must be replaced. So why, so let's say, so let's first go over 18-3B. Ken and I are playing a match against each other. And we're walking down the fairway, talking, and I'm not really paying attention. I accidentally kick and move Ken's ball, which was just sitting there in the middle of the fairway. Then, in that case, I will incur one penalty stroke and the ball must be replaced. But likewise, similar situation, Ken and I are playing against each other. Ken hits a bunker shot up under the green, near the hole. And I'm already on the green, I have a 20-foot putt, and Ken's ball is on my line because it's three feet short of the hole, on my line of putt. While Ken is taking, I know Ken's going to take a minute to rate the bunker. So to speed things up on my own and without asking Ken, I go over, mark the position of, and lift his ball. Well, in that case, I'm going to incur a penalty because I moved his ball without his authority. If I had asked Ken first, if I had said, Ken, it's okay if I lift your ball, and he said yes, then it would have been okay for me to have done that. But without his authority, I have incurred a penalty stroke under this rule. Now, there is no penalty if I move Ken's ball while searching for it. So now, we're playing in the fall. Ken misses one of his rare fairways and hits his ball into an area covered with leaves. I'm over there helping him search for the ball and I accidentally kick and move the ball. Well, in that case, there's no penalty and the ball must be replaced. And that provision, no penalty in Clause A, is important. Just what if there were a penalty? What if I risked a penalty for? Yeah, I'm not going to help him look for it. What am I going to do? I'm going to stand on the fairway and give him 30-second updates as to how much time he has left. And that's not really the spirit in which we want the game to be played.
Sounds like you would.
In fact, some people might do that anyway. So that is why there is a distinction, just to help foster the proper playing of the game. Rule 18-4, in stroke play, if my ball is moved by a fellow competitor, a fellow competitor's caddy or a fellow competitor's equipment, there is no penalty and the ball must be replaced. Exactly the same as if an outside agency has moved it. Rule 18-5, the ball in play and at rest is moved, and actually, let's go back to 18-4, about lifting the ball, with the situation where Ken at his bunker shot up onto the green. Now, let's say, Ken and I are fellow competitors in stroke play. And without Ken's permission, I go up, mark the position of, and lift his ball. What's the ruling in that case? In that case, there's no penalty because now Rule 18-4 rather than 18-3 applies. So there's no penalty and the ball must be replaced. It still would be good of me to ask Ken first before lifting it, so he's aware of that, but there's no penalty in that case.
Now, I had a problem with 18-4, ball moved and, or determining that it hasn't moved. I observed a player, once a well-known player, and was hitting a chip on the green, both chips out. And inadvertently, touched the ball, the ball moved, I saw this, the ball moved six to eight inches forward. It was slightly off the hill and the ball rolled back and returned to a similar position. And so I just walked over and said, well, the ball moved and you have to replace it. And he looked at it and he said, well, how can I replace it? It's in the exact position that had it occupied before I played the ball, therefore it hasn't moved. And he's saying it's like an oscillating ball on the pitch. And I looked at him and I looked at his position and he was 6'4" and about 240 and his skull was taken and I left. He didn't acquire a penalty, but I mean, I saw this ball move and he did too, he didn't acknowledge it. But he stood, came back to the exact same position. Now, how is, who determined that?
Okay, all right, good question. Getting back to the definition of moved. If a ball does leave its position and travel some distance, a few inches, then come back to possibly the same position, how do you determine that? And I think a lot of, you can go by a lot of factors. And I think it's, that's probably one case where you resolve any doubt against the player in part because I think from just a physical perspective, it's quite unlikely the ball could return to exactly the same position. I think that's quite unlikely. But it's not impossible in that sometimes, for example, the player might have a reference point on the ground that he could use to say, yeah, for example, maybe the ball was in a slight indentation or something. So you can say, yep, it was in this little indentation and returned right to it. Or it was right next to exactly on this old ball marker, right against the edge of this old hole plug or something like that. Then you could say, oh, that's okay. But I think in that case, as a referee, you'd say, okay, how are you certain that the ball is exactly where it was and not an eighth of an inch over here or an eighth of an inch over there? And I think he needs, somehow he's.
I asked the player and the player couldn't move because I said it was that. Well, actually, though, the ball did move. There's a difference between moving and oscillating.
Yes.
The ball moved and it doesn't matter where it came back to rest, because the ball moved.
But it does, and that, let's say, for example, and here's a semi-realistic example. A player replaces his ball in front of his dime. And then something comes up in the ball, he accidentally hits the ball while his dime is still on the ground. And the ball rolls up a slope and it rolls back down exactly to and from the dime. So because the ball marker is still there, he can tell you for sure that the ball did return to its original position. In that case, under the rules of golf, that ball is not considered to have moved. Granted, it was doing something for a second or two, but ultimately, because it returned to its original position, it's not considered to have moved.
Definition.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, just that definition. Highly on that. Yeah, so I, again, I think, Jane, I think in your case, you know, I have to ask the player how, basically, a player needs to convince you that the ball did return exactly to the same place because odds are, it didn't.
Or ask them.
Exactly what I said, didn't I ask them? Because I said so, I saw it, I was there, you were.
The ball will be eight to 10 inches and come back down more. Eight to 10 inches up. You've got a wheel of a golf ball.
Well, and it's also probably, probably a pretty interesting green.
Wasn't on the green, you said, no.
Oh, okay. No, I hear that, that's more likely. All right, 18-5, the ball in play and at rest is moved by another ball in motion after a stroke. Move ball must be replaced. So for Rule 18 purposes, all we care about is the ball that was at rest and was struck and moved by this other ball. The move ball must be replaced. Under Rule 19-5, we worry about what we do with the other ball, but for now, just know that ball is at rest, must be replaced. Then 18-6, which is the one section of this rule that does not have a companion under Rule 19, ball moved in measuring. If a ball or ball marker is moved in measuring while proceeding under or in determining the application of a rule, first replace the ball or ball marker and then see about the penalty. There's no penalty if the movement of the ball or ball marker is directly attributable to the act of measuring. If it's not directly attributable, then the provisions of 18-2A, 3B, or 4 would apply depending on who exactly, whose ball was involved and who moved it. So this rule applies when proceeding under or in determining the application of a rule. So proceeding under, let's say, for example, the player's ball is under a bush. He wants to use the two club length option to deem the ball unplayable. And he is sticking his driver as long as club under the bush to measure the two club lengths. And when he does so, he accidentally nudges the end of the, nudges the ball and moves it. There'd be no penalty in that case and the ball must be replaced unless, although what's more likely in this case is the player could just directly proceed under Rule 28. So he doesn't have to replace the ball and then proceed under Rule 28. He just needs to make sure that he has the correct reference point of the ball's original position and determine where he drops under Rule 28. Or in determining the application of a rule. So that could be, for example, players are measuring to determine whose turn it is to play. If they're measuring maybe with a flagstick on the putting green and they nudge the ball with the flagstick, no penalty, replace the ball. All right, now, the penalty statement for this rule that applies to all six sections is important. And especially for those who have their decisions book, you almost want to make a note under the penalty statement, the bottom of page 265, to continue on the top of the next page because this is not the entire penalty statement. So the penalty for breach of this rule is loss of hole or two strokes. Now, at first, say, wait a minute, this is strange. We saw that there's a penalty stroke under 18-2 and under 18-3B, but the other sections, and sometimes under 18-6, all of that really were closed, 18-2 and 3. But in other sections, specifically 18-1-4-5, there is no penalty. So how can all of a sudden, you go from no penalty or one-stroke penalty to loss of hole or two strokes? Well, what is the common element of each of these six sections of the rule? The requirement to replace the ball. So if the player does not replace the ball, then he could, he would incur the general penalty under this rule. So let's take 18-1, ball moved by an outside agency. My ball is lying on the ground through the green and a spectator kicks and moves the ball. And I'm aware of that and I see it and I just play the ball from its new location. Well, there's no penalty for the spectator moving it, but I will lose the hole or incur two penalty strokes in stroke play for failing to replace the ball. So that is an example of that. Another aspect of that is, let's say, how I can incur the general penalty. Let's say a spectator kicked and moved my ball. And I'm playing ball A, but I pull ball B out of my pocket and put ball B back on the original spot. So I have substituted balls. So the question is, is that substitution permitted?
No.
Okay, well, the answer is no. This was Rule 18-1 say. There's no penalty and the ball must be replaced. So Rule 18-1 requires me to replace the original ball. So by substituting balls, I am in breach of Rule 18-1. So that's another way that I could incur the general penalty for breach of Rule 18. So two main ways, long place or much more, or much less likely, improper substitution. But now, let's turn the page and look at the rest of the penalty statement. If a player who is required to replace a ball fails to do so, or if he makes a stroke at a ball substituted under Rule 18, when such substitution is not permitted, he incurs the general penalty for breach of Rule 18, but there is no additional penalty under this rule. All right, so this is another one of the so-called one plus two equals two situations in stroke play. As a match play, it's not as important because in match play, once you incur the general penalty of loss of hole, that's it. And you don't need to worry about whether it's loss of hole or loss of hole plus one penalty stroke. So what this rule, it addresses a few things, most common of which falls under 18-2. Where either under Clause A or B of 18-2, a player has incurred a penalty stroke for moving his ball and let's say he does not replace the ball. So without that penalty statement, ordinarily, what would you think the penalty should be? You'd think it'd be three strokes. One penalty stroke for moving the ball, two more for failing to replace it. However, this penalty statement caps that penalty at two strokes. So in the case where, I don't know if you remember, incident with Davis Law that the, I think it was the 1997 Players Championship on the 17th hole. It actually happened on 17.
It was 17, the practice putting stroke?
He has about a five footer on 17, and he's taking practice swings right next to the ball, very close to it, and he accidentally nudges the ball. Ball moves two inches to the side. At that point, what should he have done? Replace the ball with one penalty stroke. Instead, what did he do? He played the ball from the new location. So there, in that case, he's going to wind up with a total penalty of two strokes, not three strokes, but a total penalty of two strokes.
And if he were to mark it and then replaced it with his favorite putting ball, it still only would have been two strokes.
Yeah, and if he had substituted balls and not replaced it, it would still be total penalty of two strokes. So let's take the spectator example back to 18-1. Spectator moves the player's ball. The player pulls out a different ball and places it somewhere other than the original location in place. In stroke play, he'll wind up with a total penalty of two strokes, not four. Yeah, Jane?
Yesterday, Tiger, he was shot, I did a 10 to 11 call, and it was big time, right off line, and he did a hard tap, and it took the ball to the right, and it ended up in a rough area, and the spectator was camped out, and spectator picks the ball up and throws it to probably five feet or six feet, you know, bullet. Tiger comes to the area, and apparently, you know, I don't know if he saw this, but somebody must have told him, because he waited and received, and he called an official. An official came over and said, well, you had to place the ball, you had to drop the ball, because you not know exactly where the spot is. So when he dropped the ball, it looked to me, and he dropped it almost on the same area, position of where his ball ended up by the spectator, where I thought he should have dropped it maybe three or four feet more to the right, where the ball, where the player picked up, or the spectator picked the ball and threw it. The difference in angle from that position of where he should have dropped, in my opinion, would have been much more precarious, if you had to carry over some trees. By just going three, four feet, he was, he was shot up on the green, was a great shot, but it was, it was bogey, where you would have looked like it didn't make sense. I'm just, you know, wondering if how they proceeded, it was just pure, could they now have asked the spectator if someone had backed the ball?
The operating answer there is, in his opinion, I mean, I saw the same thing, and you couldn't tell. I mean, the spectator was gone. There was no way of knowing.
Were you sure the spectator was gone?
Yeah, the spectator was gone by the time he stopped. He was gone. I mean, it, this is, first of all, it's a quick, it's a rule 19 question.
Oh, so the ball, and the ball was in motion?
The ball was in motion, and the spectator, it landed, almost landed in his lap, and he just picked it up and dropped it.
I think he picked, I saw, picked it up. I think he thought about, oh, I got a Tiger Woods golf ball. And then he probably realized, oh my God, I'm on national television, and he quickly shot it out of his hand.
And a good five minutes transpired. First, you get a commercial, you got Tiger's got to walk 200, 300 yards, and then he's standing there waiting, and then the rules official comes. So all of this took forever. And basically, in my opinion, it was just a question of the rules official telling Tiger that you've got to proceed under the rule, which means you've got to drop the ball.
Okay, all right, so it sounds like several things happened with Tiger yesterday. He hit a tee shot, came to rest in the lap of a spectator, which, but then we'll get to that under the next rule, rule 19-1, how the player will proceed. And then, but let's say the ball had come for 18 purposes, that if the ball comes resting in the spectate, just on the ground, the spectator picked it up, said, oh, look at this, and toss it aside. Right, and Jane, first and foremost, the player has to replace the ball, and as you said, through the green, if you don't know where the ball was, and you estimate where it was, and drop it. And sometimes determining that point, in that estimated point, you know, can be tricky. And is it okay to ask spectators, so where was the ball exactly? The answer is yes. In fact, that's often a very good thing. And where that can be especially helpful is, say, when you have a, a player hits an approach to a putting green, that strikes and moves a ball that is already on the putting green, because this player might be 150 yards back, they might not even know what had happened. But if they know what happened, and they, with the help of spectators, they can say, okay, now where was this ball? And they say hotter, hotter, colder, colder, and then you put the ball there. And you basically just do the best you can.
And under rule, is it 20-3, talks about replacing the ball, the spectator could have replaced the ball, correct?
Yeah, yeah, the spectator is allowed under rule 20-3.
If it was the ball at rest.
To, to replace the ball. And certainly Tiger can always say, no, look, it's my ball, my neck on line, I want to replace the ball. But Tiger could allow the spectator to do, since the spectator's the one.
Well, there were also about 20 other people standing around who seen the step.
Okay.
So there was somebody there. Tiger ended up dropping?
Yeah, so dropping is correct, and I think.
Because he didn't know the spot.
Ball was originally, would he have placed it there instead of dropping?
Well, if, the situation's a little confused, because it sounds like it came to rest actually in the spectator's lap, in which case he's required to drop the ball under rule 19, which we'll get to later. All right, so let's go through some decisions, or actually, the notes under rule 18 are worth, no pun intended, noting. Note one, if a ball is to be replaced and is not immediately recoverable, it's okay to substitute balls. So for example, if you accidentally kick your ball while searching for it, and as a result, the ball goes into 10 feet of water, while you are going to get the one-stroke penalty for moving your ball, you are allowed to substitute without penalty. And the next two notes are useful, as we touched on earlier, just to remember that you don't always replace a ball by placing it. Sometimes you replace it by dropping it, sometimes you recreate the lie in various things. So next session, we'll go in detail under rule 20. All right, decision 18/1, ball lying long grass slips vertically downwards, or ball is accidentally stepped on and pressed into the ground, or perhaps is run over by a cart and pressed into the ground. In each case, has the ball moved? Answer is yes. The direction of movement is immaterial, and that's an important point to keep in mind. So sometimes, especially if you're looking for ball in a cart, and you run over and push the ball into the ground, the ball has moved, and now you have to replace the ball. And we won't get into the mechanics of that this time, but under rule 20, under rule 20-3B, there's a different process you use to replace the ball in that case. 18/2, ball oscillates during the dress. Last week, we saw under rule 14, that if the ball is oscillating, and it's not considered to be moving, which means the player may make a stroke at the ball in such a case. And this just amplifies that. In addressing the ball, a player accidentally causes the ball to oscillate, but it returns to its original position. Has the ball actually moved? Answer is, if it does in fact return to its original position, it has not moved. All right, decision 18/4, which is an interesting decision that was introduced last year, in 2014, regarding, it largely involves television evidence. So let's look at the fact situation and the key points of the answer. A player addresses his ball, observes a slight motion of the ball, but he thinks it's only oscillated and has not left its original position. He therefore plays the ball as it lies. Later, the committee becomes aware from television that the ball has, did in fact leave its position, come to rest in another position, even though the change of position was such that it was not reasonably discernible to naked eye at time of incidence. What is the ruling? Answer, the ball is deemed not to have moved, and therefore, there is no penalty. So the definition of move is not contemplate movements that are only discernible through the use of high-definition television or other form of sophisticated technology. So then, third paragraph, on the other hand, if the committee determines based on all the evidence available, the ball did change position by a mount that was reasonably discernible to the naked eye at the time, the ball is deemed to have moved. So this is the standard that now really amplifies, goes along with the definition, that a ball is deemed to have moved only when it leaves its position and comes rest in another place when that movement is discernible by, is reasonably discernible to the naked eye. Not necessarily the player's naked eye, because people's vision varies. And I'm sure, I may well have the forced vision in this room, but if the ball could have told that my ball moved, then I'm held to that standard. But one point with this, that really, this is there for our purposes to help us understand some rulings that we might see on television, that this is something really that we don't need to worry about at WSGA events. Although, Phil, I've got to tell you, we had a call from Fox yesterday, and they're actually going to televise the state amateur this year, just as a kind of a two mouth of trial run for the US Open.
Is Joe Buck and Greg Drummond going to come up?
Yep, Joe Buck and Greg will be there, it's a whole thing.
You know, with regard to this, and this is more of an opinion statement, not a question, but isn't this a bifurcation of the rules? I mean, you just stated, this could never apply likely to amateur golf. Other people think it's to Tiger Woods' rule, but I know you know that this rule was in effect or written before that incident even occurred. But this is clearly a bifurcation of the rules.
Well, is it a bifurcation of rules? I would say it's not a bifurcation of rules in that everybody's treated the same. It's just that certain players are more likely to be televised by other players. So it's the circumstances around that, that lead to different results, rather than necessarily players playing by different rules. Because you could argue that, well, at the professional level, when you have spectators that can help keep a ball in play, and you have temper, you know, grandstands and television towers that sometimes give the players favorable breaks, that, you know, those players get different results sometimes. But there are still the occasional TIO at WSGA events with scoring attempts and so forth. So things, something like this could happen at the state amateur, if a camera from TMJ4 happens to be out there on the 18th green and captures this, maybe they would have applied a decision, but it's unlikely to happen. But at one point, we should go over is, you know, really skip it, is the second paragraph of the answer, is, what is the ruling in this case? That if the committee determines that, okay, the ball did move, but that movement was not reasonably discernible to the naked eye, is the, is there any penalty? And the answer to that is no, because under the rules, that ball is considered not, not to have moved. So there's no penalty at all in such a case. And again, this, a theme we'll touch on occasionally, that when, is, when officiating, often the hardest thing is simply to determine the facts. Once you determine the facts, the rulings are often pretty straightforward. But it's determining the facts can be difficult, and how should a referee go about determining the facts? Do you first do whatever you can to just gather all available evidence, evaluate all the evidence, and then see which direction that points you?
Yeah. John, in that third paragraph, it says that he incurred a penalty under the applicable rule, which is 18-2B, and then it says, and rule 20-7C for playing from the wrong place. So would that be a force foul penalty?
No. What that means is first, this is a case where the committee determines that, well, yes, the movement was discernible to the naked eye, so the player is on the hook for rule 18-2B. And if he doesn't, what it means, he encourages a penalty under the applicable rule and 20-7C together. And that rule 20-7C really just says, okay, you incurred two penalty strokes under the applicable rule. So rule 20-7C just kind of points you to whatever rule was the applicable rule. In this case, would be 18-2B. So it'd be total penalty of two strokes, not four strokes. That, in some decisions, there are cases where when a player's playing from the wrong place, it'll say two penalty strokes, parentheses, rule 20-7C, and 26-1, or whatever. So sometimes they think of those two rules together as applying the single penalty. Does that help, Gary?
Well, it does, but it seems like the word and there is confusing that it.
Oh. No, I, that's a fair point, but I see what you mean. And where maybe it could say, encourage a total penalty of two strokes, not under the applicable rule, and rule 20, or something like that. So, all right. Decision 18/10 is a useful one. It touches a little bit on what we just talked about, and touches also on Phil's Adam Scott example from the British Open. A ball at rest on the edge of a bunker falls into the bunker when X walks nearby. Should the ball be replaced, or must it be played as lies in the bunker? Well, the answer depends on whether X in any way caused the ball to move. If he did cause the ball to move, or if X did not cause the ball to move, there's no penalty, the ball is played as it lies. If it is determined that X did cause the ball to move, the ball must be replaced, and then depending on who X is, there may or may not be a one-stroke penalty. But the helpful part is with the final paragraph. Whether X caused the ball to move is a question of fact to be determined in light of all the circumstances, which might include the distance between X and the ball and the nature of the ground. In the absence of evidence that X caused the ball to move, it should be concluded that the ball's movement was a coincidence. So again, as the RNA referee had to determine with Adam Scott, you say, okay, this is what Adam did, did that cause the ball to move, or was it just a coincidence? And weigh a number of factors.
Whose judgment should that be? Could that be the player's judgment? Assuming no official is at the round all the time, and somebody says, hey, Charlie was walking by your ball like that and then moved like that, and then you go up, and the player looked up, and there's a lot of spongy area and so forth?
Well, I just, whose judgment ultimately is? It's the committee's judgment ultimately.
We played two balls, another.
Yeah, and certainly, if the committee's not there, the main, possibly only source of test evidence is going to be the player's testimony. So they would obviously listen to him, and what the committee would do is say, okay, describe what happened. And ultimately, what it comes down to is say, okay, is it just a coincidence, the ball moved after you did this, or is it likely that your action is what caused the ball to move? And that's what it comes down to.
In this case, the player obviously should have to play a second ball, you get a committee judgment.
Yeah, that's a good, good example in stroke play, where it's a good idea to play two balls. Play what? Play one ball from the original position and another ball from the new location, and then get a ruling from the committee. All right, let's see, moving on. Now, look at decision 18-1/8. Ball moved by stone dislodged by partner's or opponent's stroke. And look at, under it, there are five decisions cross-referenced, and they all have somewhat similar themes, really dealing with causation issues. In match play, a player made a stroke, and in so doing, dislodged an embedded stone, which then struck his partner's or opponent's ball, which is lying four yards ahead and moved it. What's the ruling? Well, if the player is considered to have caused the other ball to move, he will incur a penalty stroke, whether it's his partner, or if it's the opponent, he'll incur a penalty stroke. stroke, and if it's his partner, then the partner, the owner of the ball, will incur a penalty stroke. But the decision says the player is not deemed to have caused the other ball to move. And the key there, keys here are that the player, in playing the ball, the player can't through reasonable care avoid dislodging the stone. And likewise, it was not reasonably foreseeable that this sequence of events would have occurred. Therefore, the player is not considered to have caused the other ball to have moved. So in this case, what is the ruling? That ultimately, what did move the other ball? The stone. So then the stone is a loose impediment, it's also an outside agency. So if we say that Rule 18-2 does not apply, then we say by default that Rule 18-1 would apply. So there's no penalty, and the owner of the other ball would replace his ball. And what's interesting, and those that know we've got at least one lawyer in the room, and probably more than one listening in, can tell that, that this decision, these series of decisions that were revised, actually had their roots in the old case, I think it's the 1920s of Paul Scrap versus Long Island Little Road. It dealt with causation issues, where a passenger was hurrying to make a train, and a porter was trying to push the passenger up onto the train to help that person, but instead dislodged a package the person was carrying, that happened to contain fireworks, and it went off and caused like a scale or something to fall on another person, and injure that other person. So the question was, should the railway be held liable and be responsible for causing, for causing this incident? And the judge, judgment was that, no, they could not. That, one, it was not reasonably foreseeable that all this would have happened. And even in, then in cases where something's reasonably foreseeable, you have to determine whether through the exercise of reasonable care, that sequence of events could have been avoided. So you'll see common, this common theme in these other decisions, where your first glance is, well, but it did cause it, because if the player hadn't made the stroke, another ball would never have moved. But that's really not a very reasonable or desirable answer, so where did we come up with this?
I understood that in civil procedure one, had it been explained to be in an athletic context.
Okay, so, so you're saying maybe we should introduce the rules of golf and the decisions into law school?
That's right. Well, at least the explanation, maybe, to civil.
Yeah. We get to the next year.
Just thinking back to the conversation causes me post-trauma.
I, I had a situation, I think it's analogous to the rule, that a player was playing, and he swung at it, and the head of his club came off, and it flew and struck another ball that was laying, and then knocked the ball into the water.
Okay.
And then what happened, and where did it come from? In that case, I thought the ball should be replaced, instead of the stone.
Well, let's think about that, because I nuts, in Gene's example, player makes a stroke, and his club head falls off, flies off, and his club head strikes and moves another ball. So would that be treated the same as in this decision, as with the stone? Well, I think one, or the key difference there is what actually caused the ball to move? The club head, which is part of the player's equipment. So I don't think there's any getting around the fact that the player's equipment did cause the ball to move in that case.
If, if it hits the player's ball, and you, I mean, Gene's example, it hit another player's ball, right?
Well, but even in that case, and let's say it's, it's match play and strikes and moves the opponent's ball.
Yeah.
You know, in this case, you can say, okay, the player didn't cause it to move. Ultimately, go by what object is that hit it, which was a stone. But in this case, if it's the equipment of the player.
Yeah. If it's match play, and the ball would not be immediately recovered.
Yeah, I think it is. I think it is. It's, it's tough to say. It'd be tough to, well, it'd be a one-stroke penalty. All right, here, let's finish up the 18 decisions, then we'll take a little break. 18-2A/3 is a useful decision to know, because it's a good example that ties into the decision cross-referenced after it, 34-3/6, what do when the player proceeds under an applicable rule? In this case, the player's ball is inbound near a boundary stake. He mistakenly treats the stake as an immovable obstruction and drops away from it in place. What's the ruling? Well, Rule 24 did not apply, because this boundary stake was not an obstruction. So the player proceeded under an inapplicable or nonexistent, in this case, rule. What is the ruling? Well, normally, is this decision 34-3/6, which is a very, very important decision for committees, you know, we'll go into this on, I suppose, in more detail in the final session. And so the committee needs to see, okay, what rule could have applied to the player's situation? In this case, there really isn't another rule that would have allowed the player to lift and drop the ball. You can't apply Rule 28, unplayable ball rule, to the situation as he did not intend to, as Rule 28 requires the player's intention to invoke that rule. So by default, you're left with Rule 18, that the player simply lifted his ball without authority, he didn't replace it, and winds up with two penalty strokes under Rule 18. All right, decision 18-2A/8.5 is another, establishes a key principle, well, not necessarily a key principle, but a, you know, the proper train of thought for approaching such situations. And that is, a player's ball was in ground under repair, and he plays it from ground under repair. After playing it, he says, realizes he was in ground under repair. So what does the player in 18-2A-8.5 do? He abandons the ball, he played from the ground under repair, and he drops and plays another ball outside the ground under repair. Well, what's the ruling? Well, what should the player have done after he played from ground under repair? Continued with that ball. So he has ball A lying over here, he should play ball A from point A. Instead, he plays ball B from point B over here. So he's proceeding improperly. So he's playing a different ball from a different location. So now we have to determine what, what rules he breached. That's right, 13. He's supposed to play from over here, instead he plays from over here. And the determination in deciding which rule to apply to his actions will depend as to whether the player knew the location of the original ball at the time the substitute ball was dropped. That if the location of the original ball was known at the time, substitution is not permitted, and he could have corrected this error, but when he didn't, he, he played from the wrong place, and he was in breach of Rule 13-1. Remember, that's a rule that says the player must play his ball as it lies unless another rule allows him to do it differently. So in match play, he'll lose the hole, in stroke play, it'll be a total penalty of two strokes, with no additional penalty for incorrectly substituting the ball because of the exception to Rule 15-2 that we saw. In stroke play, when a player incorrectly substitutes and plays from the wrong place, it's just a total penalty of two strokes. So that's if he knew where he had hit the ball from the ground under repair. But if he didn't know, then what rule could have applied? The only rule that could have applied is 27. That's the rule that applies when you don't know where your ball is. So the committee will use 27-1, stroke and distance, to match the player's actions. Say, okay, he should have played from over here, instead he played from here, but we're going to say, well, actually, you can't say he should have played from here, because you don't know exactly where this is. So if he's going to do something else, he has to go back, let's say, this is his tee shot, and play from there. By not playing from the team ground again, he's played from the wrong place. So at a minimum, in stroke play, what will be his penalty? One penalty stroke for stroke and distance, and two more penalty strokes for playing from the wrong place, for playing from near the ground repair instead of back from the team ground, for a total of three penalty strokes. Then, as we'll see, there's also the possibility that he could have committed a serious breach of playing from the wrong place in stroke play, in which case, we'll see next time under Rule 20, he would qualify unless he corrects that on the state board playing from the next team ground. But a good decision, no, because of how dividing line between knowing whether to apply Rule 27-1 or to apply Rule 13-1, and that is whether the location of the ball is known. Our decision 18-2A/11 is a good decision, and there, as you can tell with the decisions cross-referenced after it, its principle applies to several other situations. In stroke play, a player hits his tee shot into a practice area. He thinks he's out of bounds, so he lifts the ball and plays another ball on the tee. He then discovers the practice area is not out of bounds. What's the ruling? All right, if we don't look at this answer, and if we try to approach this from solely a Rule 18 perspective, what's the ruling? He hit his ball to point A, so he should have played from point A, but he lifted the ball without any authority, so after lifting it, what should he have done? Replaced the ball at point A with one penalty stroke and played it. Instead, he played from point B. So ordinarily, you'd think, okay, match play, lose the hole, stroke play, two strokes. But on the other hand, what also is one? Played from the spot of the previous stroke, which, and under Rule 27-1, generally, if you play from the spot of the previous stroke, you're deemed to have proceeded under stroke and distance, which in this case would actually be a lesser penalty. So the question is, which rule overrides the other? And for the, to the player's benefit, the stroke and distance procedure will override the other. So as the answer says, when he lifted his ball and played, he incurred one penalty stroke under 18-2A and had to replace the ball. But when he played from where the previous stroke was made, he played under stroke and distance, and this procedure overrides Rule 18-2A, and therefore, there is no penalty under Rule 18-2A.
So in match play, he wouldn't have lost the hole by proceeding under 20, by proceeding under 20-5, that's not, he's not proceeding under 20-5, so therefore, he didn't move the ball.
Yeah, exactly. So let's think about the difference that it makes. So this was his tee shot, that now, in both match play and stroke play, he now lies three, let's say, out in the fairway. Whereas if you had applied Rule 18, you had lost the hole in match play, in stroke play, what would be, then out in the fairway? You'd have been behind four. So this, so this is the rare case where actually applying stroke and distance is to the player's benefit and advantage. But that's a useful decision to keep in mind, and it's really amplified under Rule 27-1, so we'll get to later. Our decision 18-2A/27 establishes a principle that has several other applications, that especially as officials can be helpful. Player's ball is lodged in a tree wishes to dislodge it by shaking the tree or throwing a club. So therefore, you can identify the ball and proceed under option B or C of the unplayable ball rule, without having to proceed under stroke and distance for a lost ball. Is this permissible? Answer is yes, that the player should state his intention before taking such action to avoid any question being raised as to whether there's, should be a penalty under Rule 18-2A. So, you know, we often, you know, several times each year on television, we'll see a player's ball's up in a tree, going to great rooms to identify it, whether using binoculars, or shaking the tree, or climbing a tree, or throwing objects up into the tree. And as an official, before the player starts doing so, it's a good idea to say, do you intend to declare, deem that ball unplayable if it isn't that force? So that way, that gets him off the hook for a Rule 18-2A penalty. And the question has come up, can the same principle apply to other situations? For example, let's say a player hits his ball into a water hazard, and he's searching for his ball in tall grass in the water hazard. We saw under Rule 12-1 last week, yeah, last week, that there's no penalty for accidentally moving your ball while searching for it in water, in a water hazard, but the player's not off the hook if he moves his ball while searching for it in tall grass on the bank of a water hazard. So before the player goes into the water hazard, could he say, I'm going to proceed under the water hazard rule, I just want to get my ball back? And protect himself from penalty under Rule 18? And the answer to that is yes, that you could extend the same principle to that.
And then he can't change his option once he gets in there and realizes he can hit it.
Oh, that's, that's right. And then, and as the next decision says, you know, once it becomes clear that he's now thinking about playing the ball, for example, if he wades into the tall grass, says, gee, this is a lot thinner than I thought, then the protection from Rule 18 disappears. It's the 18-2B/1, we talked about, very important decision. Now, let's look as a pair at decisions 18-2B/7 and 18-2B/8. This is something we see a lot, and it shows, you can tell the difference between players who know the rules and players who don't, who at least know this aspect of the rule. On a windy day, the player's ball's on the putting green. He addresses the ball, then he steps away, and then the ball moves. Well, if, in fact, it is clear that wind caused the ball to move, what, what's the ruling? There's no penalty, he'll play the ball from a new location. But let's say that wind is not what caused the ball to move, that's not clear that anything else caused the ball to move, that it's not a windy day, player addresses the ball, steps away for some reason, maybe he had something as an eye or whatever, steps away, and then the ball moves. Well, bottom line is, the ball still moved after addressed, after he had addressed it. So he incurs a one penalty stroke, and he has to replace the ball. Now, contrast that with the next decision, where the player addresses his ball, and then he marks the position, the ball lifts it, steps away, replaces the ball, then he steps back without having addressed it again, and the ball moves. Is there any penalty in that situation? And the answer is, is no, there is not. Because that's one way, by standing and replacing the ball, that you can unaddress a ball. Because as the decision says in the final sentence, once the ball has been lifted, the presumption inherent in the rule, the act of addressing the ball caused the ball to move, is no longer valid. So that final sentence is really the key to that, as to explain why the answer is whether it is.
It doesn't, doesn't matter what authority you're looking for.
Well, I suppose the authority would matter as to whether there's, should be a Rule 18 penalty for, if your ball's in the fairway and you lift the ball, you don't have reason to issue the penalty, Rule 18. But whether you're lifting the ball because it's on the putting green, or to align it, or you're lifting it, maybe, you know, you're lifting it because you're afraid it might move, that the sudden gust of wind just picked up, and eventually, this feels like it's going to last a few seconds, I'm going to lift my ball from the green. And that's okay. All right, and that is it for Rule 18. Any questions about that? All right, if not, let's take, we'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll start it then at 10:45.
Office Max or something.
Yeah.
David Havrick, 20 dollars.
12:30.
During stretch. So I, I have them, you'll need to send them.
These two guys.